Trying to stuff my face.
You want to open your chips now?
Thank you, I was gonna suggest that.
All right, how we do it now?
And soda.
All right, so I'm gonna call a meeting to order, it's five o'clock, this is the Village Board meeting. I'd like to remind everybody watching that the Oregon Village Board meetings are televised live by OCA Media on Spectrum Cable Channel 983, and archived meetings are available for viewing on OCA Media's YouTube channel, which is www.youtube.com/user/ocamedia. So roll call please. Lish?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Item three is public appearances, and trustee Lish, do you want to take this one away?
I think we're gonna start with Justin. Justin McWilliams, from 105 to 109 South Main. Justin, you want to come up and...
So, just for those watching, this is from the special April 24 Historic Preservation Commission meeting, and this is Justin McWilliams. And Randy, do you want to read what the HPC's motion was, so we know what we're talking about?
Sure. The Historic Preservation Commission's motion, Bonsett View moved second by lease to recommend to the Village Board the approval of a facade grant request for 105 to 109 South Main Street up to 25% and not to exceed $5,000. Motion carried five to zero. Funded from the 2019 borrowing.
So, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure. As many of you probably have noticed, that the large white sign that was above our top windows in our building has been removed. There you go, it's a nice picture of it. And underneath that billboard-style sign was some intact, original windows. Now, the issue is that they have been covered for, as my guess, about 40 to 50 years, and a little bit of maintenance is required to watertight the building, as well as give it kind of a general facelift. I had listed a few things underneath. It was probably in the packet somewhere in there. Couple main things that need to be addressed is the mortar between the bricks. A lot of it's in pretty rough shape, allowing water to penetrate into the building, as well as kind of cutting away at the bricks that are in there. So, it's not a safe, you know, it's not bad right now, but if it's not taken care of, the bricks may become not structurally stable anymore. So, mortar and tuck pointing is the main issue that we have going on. Other things to kind of give it a little facelift. The beam that's holding up the, most of the way the building that's spanning across there is painted a very ugly green color that's not really historically accurate, as well as it's just allowing a lot of moisture and buildup behind there and starting to flake the paint. It's an iron beam, so obviously you don't want moisture building up behind that. So, we had talked about the possibility of painting that beam to match kind of the surrounding buildings. A lot of it's, you know, we've discussed black, just to kind of match the stuff that Jerry Thiel's been doing to his buildings, as well as the neighboring building, which is, his building is black, so it kind of gave it a nice line. The other painting would be the brick underneath the windows. It's kind of a 1960s orange brick that was put in there, it's not original. It's definitely kind of an afterthought, and it's nice, or as you can see in that poorly resolution photo, it sticks out pretty good. It's orange compared to the rest of the brick that's very red. We had discussed the possibility of, instead of trying to cover the brick or replace the brick right now, we talked about just using the same colored black. We'd paint the beams and paint the brick to kind of give it a nice uniform look. The trim around the windows is all actually copper. It's all wrapped copper, which is kind of neat. But whoever decided to paint the green beam decided that it would be best to paint that nice copper green as well. So that's kind of an issue, it's kind of nasty looking, so we're gonna take that down to original patented copper, will match the wrapped windows below. What else we got? There is some, what was holding that billboard-style sign was a bolt system that they welded to the beam. You can't really see it in there, but they're probably six to eight inches long, welded to the beam, so we discussed removing those before painting, kind of give it that nice uniform look. So, obviously that's not that big of an issue, but if we're gonna talk about everything, that's one of the things. Also, if you look at the, if you scroll up just a hair on the next picture, the original picture we were looking at, you can kind of see that those windows on the north end of the building right there, those are all insulation behind there. It's drop ceiling, obviously chocolate caper needs drop ceiling for having, you know, handling food. So, that's all wired, and it's got a little bit of framing, so it's kind of ugly if you take the foam off there. We looked around, and the windows are in fine shape, but it's just insulation, you know, regular styrofoam insulation from the 70s. And the best solution to kind of give it a better look was discussed, and that was to tint the windows, using like a film tint. You can't get to some of the windows from the inside, so the film's gonna have to be put on the outside of the building. I had a sample, I didn't bring it with me, I apologize. It's a, just a white opaque film that goes on the outside to kind of mask whatever's inside, but still allow light to get in. Because the other side of the building where you don't see the white, that actually is wide open to the inside, and it's really pretty, it gets a nice light in that portion of the building. So, to mask the other stuff, we decided just to do the whole top windows in that nice film that clips out of Madison that we came out, met with the owner, and he decided that that would probably be the best look. He's done a lot of historical buildings in his 30-plus years of tinting, so he thought that's, would fit the building best, and I don't know if I missed anything else. Randy, do you...
So, the window, the tinting that Justin's referring to, the windows will look like they're etched.
Yeah.
Basically.
Sorry, that should have, that, it's kind of opaque, this kind of color. It'll give a nice, uniform look.
And I'll just say, from historic preservation person, we've been asking, hoping that that box would come off for a couple years.
Yeah, it started to pose a big issue, we were starting to get water penetrating into the building because the thing was just deteriorated on the inside. I mean, the framing was just, when the guys took it down, I mean, you could stick a finger through the two-by-fours that were holding it up, so it was time for it to come down.
Any questions, board members? Yeah, Jeff?
And this is, this is, I mean, it's actually, I think the plan has already been approved. Really what the Village Board is approving is just the allocation of the funds for the grant. And we started this grant program, I think, two years ago, three years ago, and it does allow $5,000 per facade, and that's reimbursed at 25% of the cost, up to $5,000.
And, so I saw on their application that they had estimated costs. Do we reimburse, like, if they turn in invoices, or...
Yeah, what they do is they work with me, and they'll turn in invoices, and then we'll then bring that back just as a voucher for payment through the Village Board.
And just to say, I thought, I think that being a downtown business owner, and that program being offered is huge, because the amount of maintenance on these buildings, the facade, the tuck pointing, all has to be done a certain way. It's not like you can just take an angle grinder out there and start grinding out the brick. It's all done by hand, and it's very, very expensive. And hence why we can only afford to do the lower portion of the building right now, because the whole thing was a number so high that, you know, it's pretty crazy how much that whole building, the whole front would cost. So that grant program's great, and we appreciate that, and I think everybody downtown appreciates that.
All right, well, thank you for moving ahead with that, that's gonna make the building look so much nicer.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate it.
Looks better right now, I think so.
Appreciate your investment, yeah. This is true. All right, so, do you want to make a motion, maybe, that we approve this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request, the facade grant request.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
All right, item 3B, this is a public hearing. Suzanne Cowan, agent for Polly's Grill and Cafe LLC, has filed an application for a Class B fermented malt beverage with the village clerk for the Village of Oregon, for the property at 100 North Perry Parkway, doing business as Polly's Grill and Cafe in Oregon, Wisconsin. This notice is given pursuant to Section 12504-3G WS in Village Oregon 1617, 100 North Perry Parkway, Village of Oregon, Dane County. So this time I'll open the public hearing, and the first thing that we have on here is petitioner's comments. So, do you want to state your name and your address, and tell us what you're requesting?
I'm Sue Cowan, and I'm the owner of the Polly's Grill and Cafe LLC. It's brand new, we just changed over. And my address is 5168 County Road A, Oregon. The facility address is 100 North Perry Parkway at the ice rink.
Okay.
We are changing how we're handling the concession stand and the grill area, and making it a separate business from the drink itself. We leased the space, or we will be leasing the space once we get operational. And as such, we would like the opportunity to allow our patrons to have a beer with their burger in the evenings or on the weekends.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk at all? All right. Well, then I will, village attorney, you guys want to do comments, or should we have questions first?
Up to you.
Why don't you give us any comments that you have, Matt?
I did take a quick look at the application. I think the things that stood out to me were the premises description in the application, as I recall, includes the entire facility, which means that the entire facility would be licensed for the sale and consumption and possession of beer. It also, the lease agreement appeared to cover the entire facility. So it did seem interesting to me that the applicant here, Polly's Grill and Cafe, has exclusive leasehold interest in the entire ice arena facility for $1 per year, which strikes me as unusual. Nothing wrong with that, I guess, if you can get a deal like that, but did seem unusual. Those were the things that stood out for me. The application meets the technical legal requirements in Wisconsin, as far as I can tell, for getting a license, so those were my observations. Mike is just reminding me that the last time a license for the sale of alcohol was issued for this facility, for this property, the board did adopt a resolution that attached a number of conditions. It, you know, it seems unclear to me what's gonna happen if Polly's Grill and Cafe now has an exclusive leasehold interest in the property. I must, I don't know what its plans are, what the plans are with respect to continuing the hockey and other operations, but when the, when the, when the last license was issued, the facility was intended to be used as kind of an ice arena, and the board attached a number of conditions relating to when alcohol could be served, affecting hours and so on, and requiring, for example, security plans during minor league hockey games and things of that nature. So, I don't really know if there's still gonna be minor league hockey there. I guess those are, those are some other things that stand out.
Can you give us any answers to those?
Well, I think that there was a rush to get the lease done, because that came up as a late item when I was doing the application, and we can amend that, because actually our lease part is just the concession stand, concession area in the lobby. We are not leasing the ice that remain as the ice arena. And I know that there were pretty strict restrictions on the sale before, and I just don't think that's necessary. We haven't had any problems there. And it seemed pretty strange that parents could buy beer during practice, but they couldn't buy it during the rink, and the same kids are there. I mean, I would ask that we just upgraded the straight license and we'll manage it like we have in the past.
Yeah.
With that additional information, so again, the premises description in the license application covers the entire facility. So if the lease is gonna be modified so that the lease applies only to, say, the concession stand, for example, then the premises description in the alcohol license would have to be similarly modified to correspond to the lease premises, because you can't sell or serve alcohol outside the area that you control. As a, as a, yeah.
So, Sue, you're thinking that you would only be selling alcohol in that concessions area?
For sales, I mean...
But then they'd be able to take it throughout the rink?
They'd be able to walk around with it. But we didn't know, I guess I didn't... I mean, we wouldn't be selling it anywhere else, it's just in that concession area.
Questions? Yeah, Jerry?
So it could be consumed anywhere in the facility? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, right.
The whole ice arena?
Right.
So you could buy a...
Well, you could buy it at the concession stand, and then walk up in the stands and eat your burger and drink your beer.
And you could leave with it, right? You could leave with it also, right?
No, there's, we had signage on the doors saying that they could not carry out.
Okay, do you have security at the door, then?
No.
Okay.
We have cameras.
Okay. Chief, how do you feel about that?
You know how I feel, you already asked a question, so...
All right, all right.
You know, the question always becomes, is how do we regulate that? How do we keep it out of juveniles' hands? How do we keep people from carrying in and out, that type of thing? And I think when we initially did it, there was a member that was gonna act as a security guard during events and things like that. I don't know if that's still the case or not. Ben didn't mention that when I was out there, so he just talked about it was only gonna be in that lobby area, he didn't say anything about going out into the, into the rest of the facility either. So, those are, those are my concerns, obviously, we want to be able to control the distribution and make sure it doesn't get into the wrong hands and that type of thing.
So I guess just the technical concern I have, or question I have, is that I don't think it's allowable to have a license holder lease just like the concession stand area and maybe part of the lobby, but expect then that people who are buying beer can then carry alcohol outside the licensed premises into the rest of the arena? I just don't think that's allowed, legally speaking. I don't have that right in front of me here, in terms of the statute, but I, that's my understanding. So I guess it's just a question of how to address that issue. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the right answer is.
Maybe you do need to leave a lease for the whole facility, then, if that's...
Well, and then, my question is, does that lead to other concerns that you might have to figure out how to deal with, that are kind of outside the alcohol licensing context? Because now you would be leasing, you'd be the, have the leasehold interest in the property, and you'd have to figure out how to deal with your relationship with whoever's using the ice arena, because now they'd be using it at your discretion, I guess. And if you're making it available to them, under what terms? And how might that play out on other issues that I really don't want to get into tonight? Like tax issues and other issues that might come into play? So, on the alcohol front, I mean, I guess the question you have to, you must have had a reason, there must have been a reason to decide to create this LLC, to operate a separate business in this facility to sell alcohol. And, and that's fine, and certainly you can get a license under those circumstances, but we have to follow the rules here, meaning the licensed premises can't exceed the, what you're leasing. If you want to lease the whole facility, that's fine with me, again, but again, it may raise other issues for you that I'm not really in any position to comment on.
I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on the live entertainment band DJ special events? Like, how many times a year do you think you'll be having those? And would that be limited to the lobby area, then? I mean, that kind of bleeds over into that question, into Matt's question of, you may not be able to answer right away, but curious more about those special events.
At this point, we don't really have any plan. We were just trying to cover all of our bases to start with. The, considering like a live music type thing, there's really not a lot of area to do that. It might be a very limited spot in the lobby area.
Yeah.
To do something, maybe in conjunction with like a free skate for the teenagers, and then, you know, have the parents be able to be in the lobby and listen to music. But we don't have anything planned at this point, we were just trying to cover all the bases.
Okay.
I guess from my perspective, I would want to have that flushed out a little bit more, about how, how that would be handled, because I'm thinking, if going between in the ice area where the kids are and the lobby, I'm thinking of if you're having, you know, a band or a DJ, and there's a lot of people there leaving with alcohol, how the security would, how that all would work? I would like some more detail on that. Not, not right now, because you don't have it, but, you know, before I'd be willing to say yes to this.
Amanda and the chair.
So I just want to understand too, about something else you mentioned, about not having us put a restriction on when you can sell the alcohol, like if there's kids' hockey games going on? Is that, you're requesting to use your own discretion when it comes to that? Is that kind of the gist?
Right.
Well, yeah, okay, I just, I wanted to clarify that, but I'm not sure how I feel about that, because I know, you know, we have JCPark going in, and we'll have kids' games and things, and I don't, I don't know that we're planning on having alcohol sales there, or... I don't want to necessarily start a precedent. I mean, I'm fine with adult events, but, but I don't know. Kids' sports and alcohol usually is not a good mix. I don't know. I mean, I guess, have you done this in the past? Or was, are you a new owner, or you, did you...
No, actually, we've been kind of the volunteers concession managers for the last, what, three years? So we've been doing it under the old nonprofit. But now it's a private company, you know, it's owned by a private company.
Sure.
And it just seemed like it was, you know, we needed to make a change, so we're separating this out from the other part of the organization.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I can't imagine you'd probably lose out on very many sales either, though, but I don't know, I don't know about these things, but I, I don't know. That's, I have a hard time with, with selling during, during kids' events, selling the alcohol.
Well, it just seemed interesting that it was approved to sell during practices, when kids are there too, and not during games. It just seemed like it was kind of a pretty fine hair.
Yeah, I see your point. Yeah, well, I'm not a fan of doing it during practices either, personally, but... Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Well, I guess the big thing that stands out to me here is that the big disconnect is, it sounds like the intent is that the hockey arena operation will continue. But the application that was submitted gives me the impression that the hockey operation is being displaced by this facility, which has a leasehold interest that covers the entire premises and is seeking an alcohol license. And so, to me, the fact that there's a big disconnect there between what we understand the intent is, but what is being put together here on paper, that the two things are not adding up. And it would be, I think, helpful if we could make sure that what we're seeing by way of an application and a legal framework is matching up with what is actually gonna be happening in the facility. The other thing that I'm a little concerned about, I'm just not sure what the zoning is and would allow for on this property. So, I mean, there was a mention of, for example, like a concert or something. I'm not sure if that's allowed under the current zoning or not, but this is certainly a facility that would be large enough to host quite a wide variety of events. And I guess what we have is, you know, Polly's Grill and Cafe LLC coming here saying, "I now have this facility, I have a lease to operate there, and I'd like an alcohol license. But don't worry, I'm gonna let somebody else use it for hockey." And we just need to figure out how to get that apparent incongruity resolved somehow. I think that was, that would be my perspective.
Corey, you're chairman?
Oh.
Sorry.
Yes, so, like our village attorney mentioned, my primary concern is kind of the definition of what is the premises. And ultimately, what I would like to see is that well-defined and controlled, because, you know, I don't think any of us want to see a situation where, you know, the alcohol can be sold at a specific point, and then it go elsewhere and be used and not controlled in any manner. So I think we really need that definition of the premises, which, you know, needs to basically put you on the hook of you need to be monitoring who is consuming the alcohol, and have some control over that, and if there is an issue, then we have the ability to come back and say, "You have the control over that area, and you need to do something about it." So defining the premises and kind of the control of where that gets consumed, I also share the concern of, you know, we really, yes, it's a hockey arena now, but we need to, you know, make sure that we're thinking about this. If it did change, what could it be, and what could we be approving right now? So, I think just, we need some more definition from you regarding the premises, how it's going to be controlled and long-term use, and how we maintain that.
Jeff?
Comment, I had just, I know before, and I don't know how this affects, I know with previously, like with the Whalers games, there was kind of a bar area up above, like there was a 21 and older area up above, and I don't know how that would affect this, or how this fits with that. And then I know Ben's been working on the volleyball leagues and the volleyball pits outside, and I know there was a time where he was looking at fencing that, and that would be kind of additional area for food and, and, I don't think, beer and wine, or beer, I guess, at the time, so I don't know how that fits all in this.
If that would go forward, which I, at this point, I don't know if it will or not, I think that's a whole separate issue that we have to...
Well, it still, it falls under the same license, right? I mean, and that's, and then there's also the, there's also the gym that's right next to it, the new thing they just opened, right, the...
Premise description.
So, the farm, is that what it's called? Yeah, so does that connect to this as well?
Well, yeah, and that's another separate city, so that's, that area, so...
But I think what Matt said is, if it's on the premises...
Well, right now, the premises description is the inside of the building, so everything inside the building, so...
Which includes the farm, and includes the upper, upper deck area and the stands?
Everything, I think. I don't see any limitation, it just... Yeah, the map says inside building, so I think it's the whole interior.
Other comments from board members? Yeah, maybe?
Just a, one more quick question. So, is the intent to also be operational even when the hockey rink or ice rink part of it is not being used?
No.
Okay.
No, it's only while...
Events are going on?
Events are going on.
Okay, thank you.
Or it's in use, because otherwise there's no people there, because it's not like an open bar. I mean, it's a closed, closed facility.
So it's sounding to me like we want a little bit more information? Sure. Sue, have you, are you familiar with the resolution that we passed in 2017 with the limitations?
Right.
Are you, are you interested in pursuing during, with those limitations? Or if you want the license, are you, are you not willing for those limitations? That's what I'm wondering.
Well, I certainly would like to work with less limitations, because, like I said, why approve sales during practices when the parents and kids are there, and not during games when the parents and kids are there? It just seemed like that was kind of a unusual ruling. The time, the timeframes are fine, if you wanted it limited based on the time, that's fine.
Okay. And this is also saying that no alcohol would be consumed... And this is also saying that, um, no alcohol would be consumed in the outdoor, on the outdoor area? And that's not your intent, right?
No, that's not my.
Okay. So it sounds like we are asking you to define, give more definition on the premises?
Okay.
Um, sounds like we want a little bit more control of where the alcohol is consumed? Am I hearing that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Board members?
Mm-hmm.
Is there still that mezzanine area that Jeff talked about where there's?
Um, that's up there, it hasn't really been used.
Okay.
It's, basically, it's very inconvenient to get to it and it's too hard with limited staff to monitor that along with monitoring the lobby. So at this point, we didn't intend to do anything up there.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I, I think it would be helpful if, if this comes back for us to also make sure we have in front of us an understanding of what would be possible from a zoning standpoint, so that we understand what are the range of possible activities. There might be a concern about how to manage that, um, going forward if a license is granted.
Who, who will do that? Is that a Jeff thing or?
Uh, it's Mike Slavney.
Okay, all right. Chief, do you have a comment?
Does the board want to, to do or to have any information about, you know, this is a unique facility, obviously, with a lots, a lot of youth events that are going on there. So I guess I would like to see the board wanna know more information about how alcohol is gonna be controlled during these events. Not just into the area, but how is it actually gonna be controlled and monitored?
Um, we do have a, a letter, I'm not sure if you've seen this, Sue, it was an email written today, so probably not, um, from Cynthia Di.
I got a copy.
Di Camilli, okay. Um, she's from an organization called Oregon Cares and she's just expressing her concern about, um, alcohol being served or approved in the facility. And then also on our desk, have, and have you seen, um, do you have copies of the inspection reports for the building and the fire district?
Um, yes, I just saw those.
Okay. So you'll work with the building owner to correct all those things?
Yes, yeah. I think most of those were pretty minor things that were.
Yeah, Jenna?
Um, just to go back to the, kind of to loop in the, the controlling of alcohol and then the special event things, uh, I know with another business in town, I think it was Ziggy's, we had a very clear plan if they were gonna have bans and things on how they were gonna control, um, the extra volume and security and coming and goings with al- potentially comings and goings with alcohol. So, um, if you, as you're doing some of these other things, if you wanna, um, you know you wanna continue with the special event ban, I would, I would like to see a, a plan like that in place or something similar.
Okay.
I'm sure Mike and Chief can help you out with that.
I think we're probably far enough from any house to not have to worry about volume.
Hey, anything else we wanna request of the petition? Yes, Jerry?
Yes, we've got a, a letter on our desk tonight too regarding the building inspector's report, and there are a number of, uh, what they're calling violations, and I would think those would need to be corrected also.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that?
I have for building inspector.
Yeah.
So I, I guess along those lines, just a timeline as far as when these corrections that building inspection and fire, um, had, when those will be made?
Um, I think that the, um, fire one was like forty days. I thought that was in the, that they're going to follow up within forty days, so.
So if, if they'll be corrected within forty days, I guess when we're looking at it, I probably would make a recommendation for a condition to your license to include addressing those items in there. So if forty days works for you, I, I think that should work for us, for, for me at least.
So can we review the list? I've seen to me there's a list now, the items we wanna hear back, Sue.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, and let's, we can add to this. So we need a definition on, um, the actual premises, to clean up the wording on the premises. Um, sounds like the board wants to have more control of where the alcohol is consumed. I think we're a little, or some members are a little nervous about having the alcohol go into the stands. That's what you mentioned, that when, if you sold alcohol, it go into the stands, and that makes us a little bit nervous if it's a.
And that's the way it's been, they're on, and that's been, even under the, under the previous.
Did we know that?
I don't know that we actually knew that quite often.
That's not what we were told.
So if that was happening, I don't know that we knew that.
So we were told that it was, also alcohol was gonna stay in the lobby. So just to let you know.
Okay.
And that was the purpose of the security guidelines, actually?
Right.
Security guards.
So I'm not, I mean, like, I don't know if I would've voted for it in 2017 if I'd known that alcohol was going into the stands. So that's interesting that that was happening. Um, what else is on the list? Anyone else have, yeah, Amanda's?
This isn't for the list, but I was just realizing that some of these items to be fixed, if the, the premises is, you know, the definition changes and doesn't include the rest of the rink, what about the violations that are part of the rink and not part of the new definition of the premises? Are we still gonna require that they all get done if, if you're only leasing part of the space? I, it, it's gonna depend on the definition of the premises, but what, what should we, what kinda condition should we put on it if the definition changes?
Well, I think for sure the things that are actually in the, the restaurant area, there's a bunch of things on the fire and EMS that, um, that are gonna have to be done, like the, the hood, the trash.
Sure.
The electrical.
But the east exit, the goal's blocking the east exit, for example, why would that, would that still matter to us, is what I'm asking? Should we?
I'm not sure it has to matter to us, it's gonna matter to the fire chief, so.
For the bill, yeah, for, for whoever does own the building.
If they don't get it fixed in forty days.
Okay, all right, all right.
They're gonna have bigger problems with the fire chief.
Then it's a moot point, so, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so do we have a?
So, so, um, so we said, we have to close the hearing yet.
All right.
But, but I actually, I asked Matt if we should do that or not, and, and I think we should, I don't know if we wanna close the hearing and then maybe we should talk about what the process is going forward. Do we need a complete new application or just what?
Yeah, so, just to be clear, did we not close the public hearing?
Give that, no.
I have not, yeah.
Okay, so it could be kept open?
Okay.
Uh, if, if there's a desire to keep it open and, um, we don't necessarily know when we're coming back to talk about this, um, it could be kept open till the next meeting, for example, or to pick a meeting where you wanna resume the public hearing. Um, I think we're expecting to see potentially a revised application with more specificity on the premises description.
Okay.
Um, one thing though, that I think you have to be mindful of is you, your premises description has to match up with what your lease is. So if you're, if you're.
So we may have to amend the lease then too?
Well, you could lease more than what the premises covers. But if, if for example, you, you limit the premises description to say the concession area and lobby?
Mm-hmm.
If that's what the, or let's say that's the, all you're leasing?
Okay.
Then you couldn't allow, we, then alcohol couldn't be allowed outside those areas. So I think what you're balancing here is the tension between, you know, wanting to allow alcohol maybe in a, in the stands and, but are you gonna lease that part of the facility too? And again, it's, it's your call, you can certainly lease the whole facility and you can ask the board to approve the premises to include the whole facility. Just from a legal standpoint, those things have to match up.
Okay.
And, uh, so board members, are we interested in, in the, the resolution that we passed in 2017, are we interested in applying those same rules? Or is those, that resolution has, um, quite a few limitations that Sue would not, would obviously be easier not to? I just don't want you to come back and then have us say no, because we're like, no, we want you to do these. So I, I think as much direction as we can give her at this time would be better. Then we might be able to get it done in one more time. Yeah, Amanda?
Um, so I'd like to, I guess I, maybe this question is for, for Mike or Matt. Do we know why alcohol was allowed during practices and not games? What was the distinction that we made for that restriction?
Um, well, it says, for example, it says, during a time when a youth hockey team is engaged in a practice on the premises, but not a game, alcohol may be sold and consumed only in that portion of the premises designated as the lobby area. So it was allowed during practice, but only in the lobby area. At times of a youth hockey game, it said it couldn't be sold or consumed anywhere on the premises. Now why that was the case, um, I, as I recall, uh, I don't recall. We had a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna give my answer.
I don't remember. But that's what, that's where we ended up.
So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to proceed, but I'm thinking, uh, I guess in my opinion, if people are, are going to the facility for the express purpose of watching a children's sporting event, it feels wrong to me to serve alcohol. I don't think it's necessary and I think it's part of setting a good example for our youth. Um, I, I, I don't think it should be during practices either. I, I, if, I mean, certainly parents can do without a drink while they watch their child play a sport.
Yes, Jerry?
I seem to recall, and my memory might be failing me, but there, the, the distinction was that the practices, the parents would drop the kids off and go get dinner, and so the idea was to get them to stay and eat and have a drink.
Oh, so that's ringing bells.
Versus leaving and going to eat and have a drink, but, but because of, there was, you know, not just the kids practicing, but the siblings and things like that coming to watch the games, that they wanted to not have it during games. I think.
Yeah, that's ringing.
It rings a little too, but I think there, it was also, there, there was revenue part that went along with that to keep the, the facility afloat as well, and that was a big part of it.
Yeah, okay.
Cause you, you still quite a bit of food, don't you?
Yeah. Yeah. And it, it looks like good fare too, you know, and I hope, I would hope that that would be enough to get people to stay. I, I hope alcohol sales are not the only draw to stay, but I don't, that's just my opinion, I.
Do the, do the Whalers still play there? I'm out of the loop.
No, the Whalers actually got sold.
Oh.
They went to Wyoming.
Oh, bummed.
We're working on it, having a new team come in, so.
Okay.
And we also are having a lot of new adult events, skating events. We've got the, uh, Dane County Adult Hockey Federation that has come in and started skating there, so.
Okay.
So, so we do have, you know, we do also have adult skaters too, so.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I mean, I'm fine, um, and I have only one vote, I'm fine with alcohol being served at, at adult events, but if it's a youth, youth practice or a youth game, I'm, I'm not, that's not really my thing. So, I mean, I, I, I would hope that we would try to work with you to find some sort of compromise, but I, I still want, I don't wanna waste your time and have you come back. Is it, are we, are we interested in having her come back with more discussion? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna leave the public hearing open?
Yep.
And then, um, have you maybe work with staff to redo the paperwork a little bit? And then whenever that's submitted and meets the requirements, then we'll, whatever meeting that fits into, we'll do, keep talking?
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Mm-mm.
All right, item four, village attorney, village administrator. Item A is discussion of possible action regarding banking services agreement. Uh, we have a recommended motion to approve banking services agreement with Union Bank and Trust, which includes a public deposits security agreement. So does someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second to him, all right. You guys wanna tell us anything about this?
Okay, so the, the board asked, uh, worked with staff over the last two years to go through an RFP process to receive proposals from banks to provide banking services to the village. Um, uh, the board previously directed staff to work with Union Bank and Trust, which, um, gave the village a, a proposal that was deemed to be, uh, quite favorable. Uh, we now have an agreement, um, that's consistent with, we think, um, the proposal that we received from Union Bank and Trust, um, and that addresses, um, some of the, the last issues that we were really working out had to do with making sure our deposits are secure, and we think we've got, um, that issue addressed pretty well. Um, I, I think Lisa's satisfied with, with the agreement, and so there you have it.
And as I'm recalling, the reason that we were making the change was because they were offering a considerable better interest rate? Is that correct or?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was well above any other, um, RFP that we received, and then the other thing that came into play then was, um, securing our money, to making sure that that meant what we wanted.
And we're, we're a hundred percent comfortable that all of our money is insured?
There are, yes.
Okay. Good answer.
One of the things, I was gonna say is that Lisa and I, um, right now, we're gonna be getting three point nine, well, the village, sorry, the village will be getting three point nine percent of our, uh, our investments, which is good.
Yeah.
And.
I went three point nine percent.
Yeah, we're really happy with that. But we couldn't be excited about that and not have the security rate we have from Chase, so we, we asked Matt and Eileen in Matt's office to make sure that whatever agreement we presented to the board had the same level of security as we have from Chase and I, we do, per, per Eileen.
Yeah, Ray.
So, so everything is still fine with Cross Plains State? Everything is, will be the same?
There's a provision in the agreement that allows, uh, where we agree that, that this agreement can be assigned to State Bank of Cross Plains, cause they're in the process of acquiring Union Bank and Trust. Um, so that's already built into this agreement. We don't need to take any further action to allow for that. And as I understand it, um, State Bank of Cross Plains communicated with the village through U- Union Bank and Trust that they intended to honor the agreement. Is that what we heard?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else? Yeah, Jeff?
Uh, the other reason that I had requested that we put out an RFP was because I thought it was important for us to do business with local banks that are citizens of our community. And I just wanted to make that mention.
I agree. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approves. All right, 4B, discussion of possible action regarding the downtown dumpster license agreement. Wow, so this is just an action-packed first meeting for the village president.
You're welcome.
It's like, almost like Steve was saving these things for this meeting. Okay, is anyone here for this? Okay, that's probably good. All right, so here's, here are the items on this. So this is exciting to me, that Ace's Main Tap has paid the 2018 fee of $520 to the village.
Yep.
Thank you, Main Tap, if you're watching.
Thank you, yeah.
That's, that's commendable. All right, so Bridgette Ace from Ace's Main Tap will be the contact person for the dumpster agreement, and the village thanks Bridgette for paying the 2018 fee, and she has agreed to coordinate the dumpster agreement's requirements. Uh, Ace's Main Tap, Sunny's Kitchen and Charlie's on Main will be the three users of the dumpster corral. So the staff's recommendations are that the village should charge $100 per user of the dumpster corral and direct the village attorney to revise the dumpster agreement for the board's consideration. Does anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, it seems the fee changed.
The, the fee changed because I think it's, well, my opinion, I think anyone who uses a village dumpster, like the one behind here, the one across the street, should all pay the same amount.
Okay, so.
That's my, my recommendation.
The old amount due, was that for more than one year?
That was for, that was for 2018, but there were more users at that time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That was my question, just, I noticed a discrepancy in the amount of money that was gonna be.
Yep. Jerry, honestly, the, the money like, that we're gonna get is barely gonna pay, not, no offense, Matt, to pay for Matt to do the agreement, we're never gonna pay ourselves back for.
I know, the village is.
It's really, it's really, where someone's using our property, we should charge us something for using our property. That's, that's how you look at it.
Oh, I agree, I agree, I wasn't, uh.
I know your intent.[1793.76]
I wasn't, uh.
I know you're on time.
I wasn't, uh.
I keep reminding myself of that.
I wasn't criticizing the amount of the fee. I understand this is more of a service.
It is.
More of a, a service to keep the downtown, uh, garbage free.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Jeff?
And it's an annual fee.
Yes.
It doesn't say that in here, but I think we should be clear in saying that's an annual fee.
Oh, yeah, Amanda?
Yep. Um, so I'm wondering, whose responsibility is it for, like, upkeep of the actual, like, the, the area around the dumpsters and all that? Like, is?
Org members.
Did you not know that?
Yeah.
Mostly basis.
Oh, man, I feel like I'm being suckered into something here.
We can just delegate that back to public courts.
But, um, yeah, so who's, yeah.
So, the, the current, the, the agreement that we've been using requires the people who are using the dumpster to at least take care of
Right.
the cleanliness of the area, to make sure that materials are disposed of in the dumpsters, things aren't piled up, and so on, and from, from a tidiness standpoint, is that what you're concerned about?
Yeah, that, and, and also, um, uh, it's been pointed out to me, and I've, I've witnessed this myself, that other people have used the dumpsters. I, other, I've seen people drive up and throw out stuff in there, and I didn't know if there should be signage that, hey, this is only for these businesses that are paying for these dumpsters, and do we put it up, or do they put it up?
Yeah, there'll be signage up, but then it'll also be locked.
It will be, good.
Over there, it'll be locked. Right now, they're just out in the open, cause they've, they've been, we haven't had the corral for a year and a half, so, but once it's up, they'll, those businesses will have a key to that lock, and they'll be responsible for locking it and keeping it locked and such, but, and we'll put signs, no illegal dumping, and, you know, for tenemently or whatever.
Good enough.
All right. Anything else? Then, everyone in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks again to the Main Tap for doing that. Uh, number five, approval of minutes. We have minutes from February 18th, 2019, and March 18th, 2019, the motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, approval of vouchers. So, we have vouchers for May 6th, uh, 2019. Total for approval is $520,469 and 13 cents. Should we make a motion?
I'll move.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right. Questions?
Everything looks to be in order in my little corner of the world here.
That's exciting. That's good. Isn't that cute?
Yeah.
Yes, Amanda?
I actually had one question. I have to find it real quick. It was, uh, Woodward, there it is, Woodward Community Med, and there's a whole bunch of things under that, like, charges that I, what, what is that? Is that a company, or?
You know what the number is?
Uh, sorry, 10-7-90.
Let me answer that, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the observer.
Oh, media.
Yep.
I kept thinking medical. Couldn't figure out what that stood for. Like, it just, okay, that makes perfect sense now.
Yep.
Yeah, John?
I just have one quick comment. Under, under United Electric, Inc., we have a, a charge tonight for $20,525. Normally, if it's a, a really large pay application from a contractor, I'll bring it through as a separate item. This is only $20, $20,000, part of the parking lot electrical project, so, just as aye.
All right. Thank you. Any else? Corey, yeah?
Um, I just had a general question. Do we, who do we utilize for our credit cards?
We have them through US Bank.
Okay. Um, previously, when I worked at Fitchburg, they're a part of a consortium through the state, and they get a 1.6% rebate on all charges.
Yeah, we're part, we're part of that same.
Okay. Great. Just wanted to point out.
Program. Yeah, we just, um, it, it used to be JP Morgan, and about a year ago, they phased it out, and then they pha- everyone phased in using US Bank, and actually, we've been working with Fitchburg. Actually, John's been doing a really good job of, um, learning how to utilize the program a lot better, so that's why you see the large charge. Usually, it's only a few thousand dollars, but, um, we found, we found a number of vendors that we can use, and that'd be charge of convenience fee, so we've been utilizing that to increase our, um, program rebate that we'll receive.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I had a question. Uh, on the very last page, the OPN Architects, 12-9-15, which project is that for? The, is it the library?
Um, which?
Oh, it's for, um, $3,140.
The library.
That's exciting. Okay. Well, I mean, sign that, you know, progress is being made.
Hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? So, there's another rule call. Peterson?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. So, item number seven is community input. So, this is part of the agenda, those members of the public, um, to provide information to us on anything that's not on our agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and, yes, Kermit? Come up and state your name and your address, and what you'd like to talk about.
Kermit Traska, 116 West Lincoln Street, Oregon, and here representing the Near North Main Street Neighborhood Association. And, uh, over the years, group has been very involved in what's gonna happen on the former Methodist property, Methodist church property, and, uh, very much in favor of the library being there, and a library for library purposes. Uh, there are some things that have caught the attention of the group. I believe they sent a letter to all of you.
Yep, yeah, that's on our agenda.
Have you received that letter?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of course, they're very concerned about the water problems that have been associated with that area, and even have gone to the extent of suggesting that some water drainage expert be added to that, because of the problems associated with that. Um, and as the group was talking about that, and that's over the years since the talk of the library going to be there, uh, sitting in the library or on a deck associated with the library, having a book in your hand and looking over this pastoral area, lots of nice green space, trees, flowers, and shrubs to be enjoying, and it seems now there's gonna be an overabundance of asphalt in the parking areas. And as we understand it, part of that is due to the size of the building. And if the size of the building is all associated with library purposes, that's great. One of the things we understand is an overly large extra meeting room for possibly, we've heard figures up to 150, 160 people. Uh, that seems to be a bit of overkill, and if that's adding to the overall square footage of the building, and the square footage of the building determines the number of parking spaces, the group is very concerned about that. Uh, the other thought was, can we build parking spaces, and then, when the need arises because of crowding in the parking lot, add more spaces at that time. But the main concern of the group is keeping this historical residential area seeming like a residential area. You know, we're adding, you know, some public building, and then, the plans we saw, uh, with just the parking areas laid in there, uh, just seemed to consume much of that space and would detract from that nice greenery, uh, the setting, uh, that would be in that area. So, that's our concern. Um, one other concern, I guess, um, a citizen member participating on that, and we understand there is a cit- actually, two citizen members. Um, one actually has dual representation, uh, living in the area, or in the area surrounding that property, and being on the library board. Um, my understanding, she hasn't participated with this group, uh, with the concerns that the group has come up, and is she really representing a citizen representative of the residents around that property, or just fully representing the views of the library board, and get what you can during this development? Um, it was kind of a disappointed, disappointment that the people that were active of the residents right around, uh, the property, uh, none of them were selected for the committee, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, Kermit. We can't, um, really respond, because it's not listed on the agenda, but know that we're hearing you, and we do have the letter, um, uh, from your group in our, in our agenda for review, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for being engaged and involved. Anyone else? All right. Then on to proclamations and announcements. Any board comments? All right. Staff comments. Uh, first item is the Senior Center Brat Bash, which is a fundraiser. It's May 10th and 11th, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And then we have some upcoming meetings on there. Um, I would just make note that, uh, board members, note that the May 28th Public Works Utility Committee meeting is actually on a Tuesday. So it's after Memorial Day? That caught me by surprise. Just to let you know. And then we have the exciting Board of Review coming up. That I'm no longer on. You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
It's like the first time ever.
Hmm.
Uh, anything else, sorry, anything else from staff?
Just said again that, so that, on that Monday, the meeting, meeting was started at six o'clock, the board meeting.
Oh, the, the May 28th one?
Uh, the, June 3rd.
June 3rd? Oh, that's, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. I'll make sure, I'll remind the board again about that.
Okay. Jerry, did you get that?
Yes, I did. What time is the Board of Review meeting?
Four to 6 p.m.
Is it four?
Four to 6.
Yeah. Do I review who's on the Board of Review, again, for folks here? Do you remember?
Uh, Jerry Bollig is on Board of Review, Amanda Peterson, Jenna Jacobson, I believe, Cory, and myself.
Oh, basically.
I watched the two-hour training video. Thrilling.
I had one other question. Is, is that Board of Public Works meeting that got moved, is that still at the normal 5:45 time?
It'll be at 5:00.
5:00.
5:00?
5:00 o'clock, yeah. Yep.
And that'll be, that's, um, main, main point of the discussion, that'll be when we'll be discussing the Jefferson Street
Yep.
and Badfish Creek area and stuff.
So that won't be a quick meeting, you're saying?
No. Actually, we'll be discussing several different items like that on there.
Good. Anything else from staff? All right. Then on to communications, miscellaneous business. Uh, first item is library buzz. We have the May-June 2019 information. Um, anything you'd like to add on there, Jennifer?
Well, it's just informational. Thank you.
Thank you for providing that for us. There's lots of stuff going on. Uh, new library building capital campaign progress report from April 2019. Wanna give us some highlights from there?
And that's just the monthly, um, report, just highlighting the activities that are going on towards our campaign efforts.
Excellent. All right. Uh, item C, discussion of possible action regarding proclamation for National Police Week 2019. Uh, we have a recommended motion to approve the proclamation designated May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin. Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, are we gonna read this, actually, during that week? You don't want us to read this right now, do you? The proclamation?
It's.
It may be nice to print it out. Do we have, wait, when's our next meeting?
The 20th.
Oh, then we'll miss it.
It's gonna be out late.
Yeah.
Um, well, how about if we, um, well, if the motion passes, then how about we read it out loud? Would that be okay to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Does everybody have it up on their screens?
Yep.
Uh, it's 9:00 C. All right, so, I will start. "To recognize National Police Week and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy."
Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 19 dedicated members of the Oregon Police Department.
Whereas, some 61,995 assaults against law enforcement officers were, were reported in 2017, resulting in approximately 17,902 injuries.
Whereas, a total of 1,582 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty during the past 10 years, which is an average of one death every 57 hours, or 158 per year. There were 158 officers killed nationwide in 2018, which was an 8% decrease from 2017, when 171 officers were killed.
Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,900 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including police officers Michael John Mikuleski and Charles G. Irvin, Jr. of the Milwaukee Police Department.
Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C.
Whereas, 317 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. 158 officers from 2018, including officers Mikelski and Irvin Jr., and 213 officers who have fallen in previous years, but whose stories of sacrifice have been lost to history until now.
Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2019.
Whereas, May 15th is designated as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families.
Therefore, be it resolved that the, the Oregon Village Board formally designates May 12th through 18th, 2019, as Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin, and publicly statutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chief.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the board's support on this. Obviously, uh, Police Week is a big deal for us. Every time I write this, um, I'm just amazed by the numbers, uh, that continue to, uh, amount as far as officers killed in the line of duty and assaults that occur on police officers every day, so, while we are somewhat fortunate in the village, you just never know what can happen here, um, and I appreciate the board's recognition.
Item D, discussion on possible action regarding proposal from Alpha Controls and Services for Police Building's HVAC system. We have a recommended motion that, to authorize the village president to sign proposal for Alpha Control and Services to replace the air handler unit, which includes the initial setup of software programming and training of police department staff for the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and three dollars. Funding is from twenty seventeen borrowing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just to give you a little bit of background, right now, we're having an issue with our HVAC system and the flow that's coming in and out of the building. It's either coming in all at once or it's not. So, they can't, we can't control the amount of airflow coming into the building. And a part of that reason is, is because the last system, the company that did it, SCF, basically locked us out of the software. And so, we can't control, like if, like individual rooms, we can't control the temperature in the rooms based, because we're locked out. So, what this will do is this will allow us to actually be able to control that. They're gonna train us on whatever that takes to be able to do that on our own, because right now, every time we have an issue, it's three to five hundred dollars every time they have to come out and control the heating and cooling in the building, so.
All right. Any questions? Yeah, Jerry?
Chief, you'll, which, I see there are voluntary add-ons. Are you doing one or two or both?
Um, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the proposal.
Oh, it's down here?
Yeah.
I see. No, we're doing, we're doing the first one, not the add-ons to the boilers. That's gonna come later.
Okay, all right.
It's just the thirteen thousand five hundred and three.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Systems Plus. This is the Panic Switch and Fire Monitoring Contract. We have a recommended motion to authorize the village president to sign the monitoring agreement and proposal with System Plus. Have that motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So, is this also for the police building?
It is.
Is this for Jeff's office?
For when Jeff comes into the office.
Uh-huh, yeah, okay.
So, as part of the accreditation process, in our booking room, we're required to have panic alarm in case something happens. And we do have those throughout the building now, except they don't work.
Hmm, great.
Yeah. So, we discovered that when, I believe, Boltronics came in and did all the electrical work and the doors and things like that.
Yeah.
They disconnected it, and so, it doesn't work. I'm not sure. I'm assuming that was unintentional, I don't know. So, we went out and we got four bids. We included Omni, which is the new business in town, and Systems Plus was the cheapest. They also seem to be able to do it without requiring extra labor, extra electrical work, and the yearly monitoring is a little bit cheaper as well, so we thought they would be the best to go with.
All right, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it FYI only? Proclamation, Proclamation for Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week, which apparently we wrote twenty-first to the twenty-seventh. Thank you for your work, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Belated.
Sorry.
Belated.
Well, we didn't get the information from the county or whoever it came from until after the meeting, so.
Lisa, do you want us to read this?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Well, do you want us to?
No, you don't have to, it's way in the past.
Can we do it anyways? I think we're going to.
If you want to, go ahead.
All right, so this is a nine F in our packets. Let's read the one that's like in like the cursive, the one that I signed.
Yep.
All right. So, this is a proclamation for Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week, April twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Whereas, the Office of the Municipal Treasurer is a time honored and vital part of local government that impacts the day-to-day life of citizens throughout the state and...
Whereas the municipal treasurers provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local, county, and state levels and...
Whereas the municipal treasurers administer the procedures and keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out its public function efficiently and confidentially and...
Whereas all municipal treasurers are the official custodians responsible for proper management and investment of public funds and...
Whereas the eighteen fifty-three municipal treasurers and the seventy-two county treasurers work together to collect all property taxes for their own municipalities and counties, as well as their local schools, technical colleges, and the state and...
Whereas municipal treasurers continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the Office of the Municipal Treasurer through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and conferences across Wisconsin and...
Whereas Governor Tony Evers signed a proclamation on March twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, declaring April twenty-first to twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, as Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week in Wisconsin.
Now, therefore, IGNI Carpenter, village president, a village of Oregon, do hereby recognize the week of April twenty-one through twenty-seven as Municipal Treasurers Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal treasurer, Lisa Novinski, and to all municipal treasurers for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So, thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
You are appreciated.
Thanks.
Just a week late.
Better late than never. All right, item G, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Appointing Chris Swase, who's the Rotary Representative to the Park Board, for a term ending in twenty twenty. He is replacing Rich Strominger. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? We thank Chris for volunteering for that, appreciate his service. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. FYI only, Ironman Wisconsin, seventy point three, is June ninth, twenty nineteen. So, anything you want to say on that, Jeff?
Uh, no, this, this is, uh, they've been doing this for quite a few years now, and last year was a new, new route through the village to try to reduce some of the congestion that we've had. It's a one-way route through the village. I think the first one is in town, probably about seven thirty, and they're usually done by nine thirty or ten, so. And Oregon Police supports us. They're always out in ice, it always happens to fall on graduation day, so that does cause a little bit of grief, but...
Just from the chief.
Just from the chief, exactly right, which here, this is him, here, this is, see him standing on the corner. In case you don't pick it up on the exhibit.
Why are there so many of them?
Is that you that put Chief Wiggum on there?
Yes. Seemed appropriate, only if you look closely enough. But actually, and Race Day events, who, who takes care of this, I think has been very good at paying for the overtime and paying for our EMS, and we support them with some barricades, and yeah, it's been a good event for us.
Yeah, they did a good job, but they, it used to be a two-way, and because of the graduate, it always happens on graduation, so they did the one-way event, so it's worked out pretty well.
And this, this is on Sunday, right?
It's a Sunday morning, yeah.
So, we're, so are we alerting the churches to this?
They alert, they, yeah, they send letters and everything and announcements to the churches three to four weeks in advance.
Okay.
Yep.
Jeff, are you gonna get our sign out there to let people know that this is coming?
Yep, see the, the flashing Race Public Works sign goes out at the Dunn, kind of the Rutland Dunn Road out there, and it just says Race in Progress and...
I was talking about like ahead of the event, so people knew to avoid...
Yes, yep, we'll have it out there the week before, Ironman on Sunday morning or something like that.
Thank you.
Which direction? Are they going north-south or south to north?
They, they come from north and then south through the village, so they're actually going...
Yeah.
Yeah, down through, and then, and then they exit out on Lincoln Road and Glenway or whatever that is there.
Yep.
There's already been a lot of bikes coming through the village, through the route, so...
Yeah, they practice on it.
Yeah.
Very cool. All right, thank you. Item I, Review of First Quarter Financial Report. Questions on this or highlights that you want to give us, Lisa or Mike?
I, in looking at this, we're right on target where we should be for the year. Some of the expenditures, if you look, it's overall, we're at twenty-eight point five percent, but that's because a lot of our insurances are paid in full already, and also, we're always a month ahead for our health insurance.
And snow and ice.
Right.
Yeah, snow and ice, we're way ahead because of, that's normal.
Any questions?
It's fine.
Okay. Any questions? All right, no action needed on that, right?
No, distracted.
Okay. Item J, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Senior Center Policies.
What?
It seems that, yeah, this is exciting, more policies.
There's more than ten here, Mike.
Um, should we, do we, should we do a motion first or...
Probably.
Okay, so when we get this on the table, does someone want to make a motion to approve these policies, knowing that a final set of policies will also be reviewed at our June third, third board meeting? Yeah, Jerry, you want to make that motion?
I'd be happy to make this motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
How would you like to do this, Rachel? Do you want, do you want to give us highlights? Do people have questions about certain ones? What, what were you thinking?
Well, I just was gonna say that, like the police department, we are going through a reaccreditation process this year. We've been through this every five years since nineteen ninety-four, so these policies are not, for the most part, new policies. They are policies that were generated by Council on Aging Committees over the course of many years, and they've been updated again. And so, I'm happy to take questions about any particular policy that anybody might have.
Any questions?
See, and there were fourteen of them because they're not quite as technical as...
There's more next.
I'm sure Randy's got questions.
I memorized them. I was on the committee.
All right, so, there's no questions? Then, all in favor of approving these policies, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, we'll see more of those at our next meeting?
Yep. Actually, June, June third.
June third, okay. Well, thank you, Rachel, to you and your staff for doing that important process.
Well, thank you for the approval.
All right, item K, Update Regarding Hiring a Front Office Receptionist and Village Planner and Zoning Administrator and Possible Board Action.
Yeah, I, I put action on there, I'm not sure it's really necessary. We, we just wanted to tell you, the board, that we tried going through a temp service to hire the receptionist that, and it's just not working out. So, we're, we're gonna repulse the job and go out again and try to recruit for the position. And we, we're gonna have it open for about a month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Same thing with the village planner, we decided to go out again, and we're going to be posting that for at least a month, and looking at doing interviews probably the middle of July or so, early July, and following through with that process, so we'll keep doing it until we find the right person for the village. That's an update. I don't, I don't think there's any board action on it.
Well, thank you for going through all the work on that, and we'll, we'll find the right people.
We will.
It'll happen.
Yep.
Okay, next we have Jenna's item. Jen, how long is this? Is this like twenty minutes?
No, no, it'll be, the other video's like...
It's fifteen minutes.
No, 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 this, I, I, this is, maybe about five or seven minutes.
Okay, it's gonna be twenty once he goes and gets our popcorn. Item L is a review of sewer liner video.
Exactly. I, I always love, any, anytime anyone asks to see sewer videos, that's, that's a great night.
Thanks, Jeff.
Well, you know, we've, we've been doing a lot of discussion about INI, infiltration and inflow into our sewer system, how it affects our, our water flows, or our flows to the plant, how it takes capacity out of the plant. So, before I show you the sewer lining video, because that's, one of the things we'll be looking at is possibly lining some areas and grouting some areas, I thought first I'd just show you some examples of what, what, when, when these cameras go down, these pipes are all horizontal here, fairly horizontal, what, what we mean when we see infiltration and inflow or INI. And so, you can see this one right here.
It's just like a colonoscopy.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a narration.
How, how wide is this pipe, Jeff? Like, how many inches wide?
This is probably a twelve-inch pipe, twelve or... Okay, you okay with this, Jerry? You'd have to use the restroom.
No.
You sure?
I'm being in there so far.
You doing all right? Okay.
I'm doing, Jeannie said I can't go anymore.
So, you can see this, this one's bubbling up. You can see that last one was, you know, streaming in, bubbling up. These are just all different, here's another one from the side. And, and you think, oh, this, you know, this doesn't add up to much, but you know, you start adding one after another, some of them get really severe. Now, this is just an example video I found online, but this gives you an idea when, when you see these, they're, they're basically concrete cracks or, or fittings that, that go bad. Here's another one here. Even just a small drip, it does add up. Some of them can get really significant. Let me just go, here we go. Okay, and, and you know, that's easily several gallons a minute, that adds up. And so, you can see that we get INI flow in many, many different forms and locations and everything like that. So, so that's a good one.
I think we got it.
Okay, you got it? All right, good. I know. All right, so now, we're gonna go with one of the...
Oh, there's more. Oh, there's more too.
There's more. Okay, so now, now we're gonna talk about the trenchless technology, the pipelining of what you're talking, and this is actually a, a really nice little video here, and sit back and enjoy.
Maybe Jeff can show, Jeff, can you show where the, the lot that used to be, uh, you know, that's basically we're, we're cutting that out, adding that, um, adding that to the lot too, which, uh, fronts were on. What was gonna happen if we didn't do that, we were gonna have a landlot. At some point, like, I'd be end of...
So this is the, uh, housekeeping portion as part of the TIC campus project. If you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item two, um, just additional May second plan, which I am, will be on the May twentieth board agenda, and, um, really that's because Matt needs to do some work on that, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, uh, going to item B, which is the park board meeting for May first. Trustee Horton, take it away.
Yes, we had a park board meeting on May first. Um, the first item that we talked about was, um, the Girl Scout Group fourteen hundred came and talked to us about placing a little library in Jason Park. Um, we recommended approval for placing a little library in the park. Uh, the location is near the parking lot on Oak Street, depending on the, um, any context.
I'll second.
It's final.
Any questions about that? If you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, item two.
Item two, uh, Oregon Youth Baseball, um, has a proposal for amending their previous, uh, discussion for, uh, the bathroom shelter. They had talked about doing a cinder block wall and they have amended that to be two, uh, garage doors, uh, one on either side, um, for enclosing the shelter. So, this is, uh, at, uh, the Kaiser Park on Oak Street, um, so that motion through, uh, the park board has, um, so I will make the motion to amend the proposal for installing, um, the steel garage door instead of...
Second.
Any questions? Uh, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three.
Okay, item three, um, we discussed the addition of two new, uh, benches. One of them is a... That, um, passed unanimously, had, or, I'm sorry, it passed that, um, in the...
I'll second that.
Any discussion of that?
That's all I need right there. So they're picking up the, the main cost, which is the bench.
And at ASAS Main Car, we have Sarah E. Rich, have a motion for approval, please?
Sorry Rod.
I will make the motion. I'll second. Discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, does it look like we have any other approvals for upper your licenses?
Should just flop over.
We have some future agenda items?
You guys should be able to just drop it over now, it couldn't do anything.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Well done.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Take the meeting. You can take the next meeting off, you did such a good job.
Aw, thanks.
We'll see.
You and I might be, so we can get together for, uh...
Watch my stuff to me.
A walk-up.
We have a two-hour, two, three-hour meeting.
A waiter walk.
Yeah, I guess so.
And I think I can speak.
For public works?
So...
Thanks Jeff.
Not Jeff. Think I got, I must've. Sorry, that's on... Well, so that would be...
Now the committee?
What do you think so far?
Well, that, uh, yeah, that's the Girl Scouts.
Hey, hey Jeff?
They really did, that was cool. And what did you guys end up deciding on the, the data thing?
So, all the staff?
You didn't make a decision on, uh...
I, I must've got...